Meeting for Tuesday, July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. Approved the council agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, how many additions or corrections for you tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave. Uh, roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Invocations from Hutchinson Evangelical Free Church.
Um, Mayor, we don't have anybody here tonight from the Free Church.
All righty, uh, we'll just jump ahead to Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, please mute your mics and Mr. Sebastian is going to lead us, please stand. Go ahead, Dave.
You're just gonna shut them. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, you were muted that whole time, so.
You're absolutely right.
It came through, it came through. All right, uh, recognitions of gifts, donations and community service to the city, does anybody have anything tonight? All right, uh, we have a couple of resolutions under there. Uh, resolution number one, five, one, nine, one, resolution accepting a hundred and fifty dollars donation from our savers, the Lutheran Woman's Guide for Law Enforcement Memorial Park. And, uh, we have resolution number one, five, one, nine, two, resolution accepting a thousand dollars donation from the Hutchinson Auxiliary for the Hutchinson Fire Department. Have a motion to accept those.
Make a motion to accept, thank you to both parties.
Absolutely, I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave, roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Dave, uh, Matt, do we have anybody to adjust the council?
Uh, Mayor Council, no, there's nobody here to adjust the council name.
All right, uh, approval of minutes, uh, wriggling meeting minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand twenty. So.
Second. Beat her.
Okay, uh, motion, uh, Dave, second by Mary. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Steve. Uh, I don't know. Hi. Chad.
Aye.
Dave. Aye. Aye, motion carries consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A, we have, uh, resolution number one, five, one, nine, zero, resolution to sell at auction surplus property. That's from the compost site equipment. Uh, B is approval of butuminous repair project at Creekside. Uh, C is approval of developers agreement for W U F. I'm sorry, you. I'll get it right, yeah. W U H F LLC, the seven, Highway seven east business park. Uh, D is approval of reaffirmation of the Hutchinson City data practices policy. E is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Fire Department Relief Association on September twelfth, two thousand twenty. F is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Saint Anastasia Catholic Church on September twelfth and thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, approval of items for the south central drainage area improvement phase two, letting number three, project number twenty dash oh three, and there's two resolutions under there. Um, resolution number one, five, one, nine, four, resolution ordering preparation of reports on improvements. And resolution number one, five, one, nine, five, resolution receiving reports and calling for hearings on improvement. Uh, H is claims appropriation and contract payments, does anybody have anything they want to pull off for discussion?
G, please.
Do you have a motion to approve the balance?
So moved.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve the balance, roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. G, Steve.
Yeah, I didn't know if Kent is available, but, uh, I guess I was just curious the extent of the project when you look at the funding sources, it has stormwater and sewer and it talks about aggregate base or something. Um, is there paving, uh, after this, are we leaving it gravel for the winter or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's more of a story here, definitely, Steve, thanks for asking the question. Uh, what's, what we really are, are trying to do is take advantage of a, a contracting, uh, opportunity. Uh, we received bids last week on the Civil Air Patrol, uh, utility extension. Uh, we actually received eight bids, uh, the, uh, with two of the bids being our, our local contractors, uh, being two local contractors, uh, being substantially lower than the other, uh, six and about thirty-five percent less than our final estimate. So, I think, I think what's at hand here is, uh, there, there's contractors out there and specifically locally that are, are looking for work and uh, in particular, uh, utility pipe type work. And so, uh, based on a conversation, uh, with staff, uh, obviously Matt and I discussed this, we discussed it amongst the public work staff, engineering staff and and probably most importantly, uh, Mr. Reed from a finance standpoint. Uh, we do have a stormwater utility bonding dollars, like what was alluded to earlier during the audit, there's still, uh, about five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of, uh, stormwater funds uh, with that bond, bond funds, uh, that weren't in essence spent on the pond. Also on, uh, we do have some sanitary sewer work and thi- and this is with respect to just doing the pipe work on the east side of the rec center. Like you probably picked up on, on the, uh, the engineering report, uh, the streets involved would be, uh, Harrington, Merrill Clinton and Lyndale. Uh, the, the work on Lyndale is just a spot repair on the sanitary sewer system, so that's nothing significant up there. Uh, the other roadways in essence would be, all the pavement would be removed. Uh, there's a fairly decent, uh, existing, uh, aggregate base section up there. Uh, so what would happen is we reclaim the streets, do the pipe work, remove some of the curb and gutter. Uh, we'd remove about ten driveways, the end of ten driveways would be impacted by the pipe installations. In the end, I believe the impacts and you know what the existing, uh, aggregate section out there, uh, would survive the winter. Uh, obviously it'd be gravel and then next spring we would bid a, uh, a normal pavement management program project early on, which would just consist of the roadway work, you know, the building the road section and then, uh, the paving. And of, and the curb and gutter and restoration and of the boulevards and such, so. I think there's just an opportunity here, uh, we, we believe we can deliver it, uh, ordering the hearing for the next council meeting would set us up for September second. Bid opening date, uh, my biggest concern is getting plans and specs ready by then. Uh, we'd have to have those out on the streets posted, uh, by August twenty first at the latest, to be about ten days or so prior to that September second bid opening. Uh, if that isn't feasible, we could conceivably push it two weeks, uh, to a Wednesday, September sixteenth bid opening and then potentially award it at the last council meeting in September and still give the contractor a solid two months, two month window prior to Thanksgiving, basically. So, yeah, that's, I think there's an opportunity here, you know, to capitalize on a, a local contracting, I guess, opening. Uh, we didn't see this coming, I don't, I don't think it's just locally, it's on the west side of the metro from the indications of, uh, the, uh, eight bids we received and we also had four, on our final plan hold this list, we had fourteen bidders identify themselves as potential general contractors for this job, so eight of the fourteen ended up bidding the job in the end.
Can't correct if I'm wrong, this isn't our plans to do next year, though, I mean, this was a part of our C A, C A P, we're just moving some of that up for.
Exactly, and the beauty of it is, it would be solely funded with primarily stormwater utility dollars and specifically those bonding dollars that still remain. Sanitary sewer wastewater, uh, utility funds and then a little bit of water funds, we would replace a few hydrants, uh, valves and, uh, need to offset a couple of water mains with the, uh, the new pipe, new, uh, storm sewer pipe going in. So, there's no bonding or special assessment funds, that would come into play next year when we do the, uh, the street project.
Can't, what percentage of this, uh, project would be done then, with, with this work?
Uh, well, it would be substantially completed by Thanksgiving, like I mentioned, there might be a little bit of restoration work that, that falls into next year, but it honestly, I think it could be finalized, you know, the contractor and it gets it to, everything back to grade, gets it back to a suitable gravel surface, uh, you know, hopefully we would, everything would freeze solid, you know, if we get a winner like we get, have last winter where it was relatively cold, uh, we wouldn't have much for maintenance issues throughout the winter, everything would be pretty solid. The risk obviously at, at hand is if we get a warm winter, then it becomes more problematic, uh, you know, from a city staff standpoint, you know, uh, removing snow and probably just touching up the gravel surface as the, uh, the winter plays out.
But that would, that would complete the east side of the project, right?
That would complete the major utility work on the east side of the rec center. Yes, and it, it also sets us up for next year for doing a project, bidding a pavement project earlier and getting a better price from a, a paving company, you know, they, we would, they wouldn't have to wait for the utility company to do their work. Uh, they could get a job right out of the gate that they can get in, start doing the roadway grading and be paving early on, uh, which is usually an issue with, with pavers is they don't have work on the front end of the season. All their work gets, uh, back in loaded because they're always waiting for utilities and grading operations to get done. So I think we could set us, set ourselves up well to get a good paving number next spring also.
Is the west side still on the target for next year?
Yep, then the west side would be in twenty twenty-two.
Um, yeah, what happens if we have a wet fall, I mean, is this something that they only do what they can do and hopefully they can do all of it, but?
The, I think, uh, due to the, the type of soils and the amount of granular material out there, we're looking at the borins, we have anywhere from, once they reclaim the, uh, the butuminous grinded up, they'll have anywheres from eighteen inches to two feet, twenty-four inches of, of decent material on top, so I think they're gonna have a fair amount of material that they can dress up, spread out, utilize, you know, that'll all become waste next year, it'll get fairly contaminated and kicked around all winter, but that was our plan anyways, was to put a new, a brand new section into these roadways, uh, you know, basically they would be a reconstruction project, so we didn't plan on saving that reclaim anyways, in the end, you know, hopefully some of it's good and then in the, uh, the roadway project, we could send some of it out to Creekside next year depending on how disturbed and contaminated it gets, but I think there'll be some suitable material that can go, uh, Andy's direction.
Okay, thanks, um.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I was surprised about the good prices because earlier with Main Street, it was like, oh, this is the sign of things to come, you know, the higher costs and.
Yep, and staffs had conversations with local contractors, obviously, you know, following last week's bid opening and yeah, they're, they're looking for work, others in the region are looking for work, so confident we're gonna get a good number and set ourselves up well for next year. Once we get plans far enough along and staff fully understands how we're gonna address maintenance through the winter, whether it's within the contract to some degree or just with, with city staff and operations, we will administer some sort of outdoors neighborhood meeting, you know, we're not assessing people, but we want to inform people and obviously let them know on these streets what's potentially come in their direction, so. We might get some feedback, obviously during that, but like I said, I think we have an opportunity to, uh, capitalize on here. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Steve, one thing to add, um, I think you can see how much the construction will just change in six months. Because even as we've started discussions on the next phase of the, the police station, we're hearing that construction looks a lot different than it did six months ago, so, which I think is good for those of us that are looking to do, to do projects, but you know, back to your point of what we saw six months ago, it's amazing how quickly that, that has changed.
I'll make a motion to approve and resolution one, five, one, nine, four and one, five, one, nine, five.
I'll second that. Let Chad have it.
Okay, motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Dave.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Aye, carries. All right, uh, if it's all right with everybody, I think I'll skip down to eleven, uh, summary review and approval of the two thousand nineteen audited comprehensive annual financial report.
Justin, are you gonna take this one?
Yes, I will. Thank you, everybody, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, we're required each year to compile financial statements to show where we sit financially and this is important and time-consuming process for the finance department, at the start of year-end process, it's not for that period, it's for all the way through March. Um, our auditors with Abdo Iken Myers typically come out to perform the fieldwork in April, but with the ongoing pandemic right now, everything was done virtually this year. And then our annual report is then finalized in June. Um, due to our audit firms still working remotely, we don't have any hard copies available yet, all the hard copies will be available at a later date at both the city center and the library. And electronic copy will also be available on the city's website under finance. One state requirement is that we publish our fi- our summary financial statements in the newspaper and those will be published with tomorrow's edition of the Hutchinson Leader. Um, we, now we do have two of our auditors here with us tonight to virtually present this information to you. And they are Lane Cockelman, an audit manager with Abdo Iken Myers who has overseen or audited for the past several years. And also Andy Berg, a partner with the firm who has worked with us now the past two years. They gave you a detailed review at the earlier workshop and are back now for a quick summary version. And once Lane and Andy's presentation is complete, we do ask that you formally approve the two thousand nineteen comprehensive annual report. And if you have any questions, again, please feel free to contact me or Andy Reed.
Yeah, thanks, Justin, so like Justin mentioned, my name is Lane with Abdo Iken Myers and, um, I'll be giving you a quick spiel here, so like Justin mentioned earlier too, we went through the, um, the CAFR in, in detail, uh, at four thirty and spent that hour and, and went through that, so this is gonna be kind of a high level overview of, of what we went through there and give you a summary based off of that. Uh, so like Justin said, our objective is providing opinion on the, on the financial statements for your two thousand nineteen audit. Uh, and we provided a clean and unmodified, unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is good, is what you want. Uh, due to the amount of federal dollars spent during the year, we also were required to do a single audit for the year. And we, uh, also offered a clean opinion on the, um, on that report as well. Uh, so a clean opinion on both those reports, uh, we did not have any financial statement findings to report in two thousand nineteen and we also did not have any, um, legal compliance findings to report during the year as well. So overall, if we looked at, um, in detail earlier, the, the operations of the general fund, the capital project funds and special revenue funds uh, and the debt service funds as well, the governmental funds of the cities, very healthy fund balances and all those funds, uh, they've, they've grown over the past few years. Um, just based off of, of a conscious effort, uh, based on the city's, uh, to grow some of those fund balances and to, to budget conservatively, um, with the, the finances in mind. We also looked at some of the, the operations of the enterprise funds as well, uh, and the same thing, the operations of, of those as well have been growing, the cash balances have been growing in those funds, uh, and building some of those reserves up um, for, for those purposes and for some of the capital purchases for future, the future projects. Um, so overall, the city is in, in very healthy shape financially and a conscious effort on the finance departments and, and, and other department heads, um, when they do their budgeting and their planning. Um, so with that, um, that is all I had, uh, like I said, we went through the, the financial statements in detail a little bit earlier, so again, kind of a high level summary here, um, at the meeting right now.
Wayne, uh, can you, uh, just with the general fund, just talk about, uh, the fund balance increase and the percentage and explain that a little bit versus recommendations?
So, uh, if we look at the, if we look at the general, uh, one quick thing that, that we kind of like to look at is, is where the ending fund balance is as a, as a percentage of budget expenditures. Uh, so at year-end two thousand nineteen, uh, the total general fund balance ended up being, uh, about seven point six million dollars, which was an increase of well three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the year prior. Uh, the city anticipated about a two hundred thousand dollar decrease in fund balance, originally the city had a balanced budget, um, there were some changes throughout the year that, um, that changed a little bit to, to have a, a drawdown of two hundred thousand dollars, but uh, in actuality, uh, the city did cre- increase their fund balance of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, in two thousand nineteen. Uh, if we look at that as a percentage of the budget expenditures, the city anticipates well thirteen point five million dollars of their general fund, um, general fund expenditures in two thousand twenty. Uh, and if we look at that, uh, the, the general fund balance is about fifty-five percent of the expenditures, um, that is well above the city's, uh, recommended, uh, their fund balance policy of forty percent and is what we would recommend as auditors and they give most of the cities recommend something similar as well, right around that thirty-five to fifty percent of expenditures, uh, and again, the city is right around fifty-five percent, uh, at year-end two thousand nineteen.
Just for the public's knowledge, that two hundred thousand dollar added expenditure was for street repairs. Additional street repair work that wanted to have done.
Any other questions? All right, like Justin said, if you guys want to formally approve it, it's, it's been a pleasure, Andy and I are both are very thankful to work with you guys, so we're thankful for your time again, um, and if you have anything else, feel free to reach you, to reach out to us and we will answer anything that may come up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a motion to accept.
It moved.
Second.
Chad, that was you, wasn't it? Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Roll call, Mary.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All righty, uh, jumping back up, we, we don't have a public hearing, so, uh, communications, uh, we have, uh, Economic Development Authority year-end report.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we do have, uh, Economic Development Director Miles Seppold here to give the annual report, so he'll come up and, uh, address the council and we do have a little slideshow we'll share as well.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Council, good evening, um, thanks for giving me the time to fill you in on what we've been doing at the, um, E D A. Um, I got a quick report for you and then as we go along, if you guys have questions about anything at all, uh, just stop me and I'll be happy to answer them. There we go. Okay, um, you know, at the Economic Development Authority, the, the first thing that we do and our priority every year is to take care of our existing uh, manufacturing companies, really that's the number one source of job growth, of economic growth in any community, that's where eighty-nine, eighty or ninety percent of the growth comes from. And so every year and a half or two years, I try to make the rounds with our local companies and it's really for three reasons, I, you know, I want to communicate our appreciation that we're glad that they're a part of our community. Um, I want to find out if there's any difficulties or challenges that they're struggling with that we could potentially help with. And then also we want to identify any opportunities for growth, uh, because we want to grow our local economy, so to that end, I went around and visited nineteen manufacturers, uh, over the course of two thousand nineteen. And in the course of my visits, I mean, I think most of them, if not all of them, were, were actually doing very well, I think the biggest concern that they had was just the shortage of skilled labor, but beyond that, they seemed like they were, uh, pretty happy and pretty successful. And, um, yeah, they were happy to be in Hutchinson, so I think that went well. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we were able to recruit one new company to come to Hutchinson, that's Zephyr Wind Services. They bought the new crane building, uh, on Highway seven west. And Zephyr, that's a company, they repair, uh, wind generators, uh, generators on wind turbines and then they also provide parts and then they s- uh, store, uh, spare generators for, uh, uh, wind turbine operators. So the E D A pitched in with a hundred thousand dollar loan and then we did some behind the scenes stuff to help make that deal come together. And they've already met their job creation requirement, um, just the other day, they sent me an email and said they had eleven people there full-time. And they're continuing to add staff and it's, um, pretty remarkable operation, so we're really happy to have them here in Hutchinson. And I know they, they're very happy with the building and they're very happy with the community. Um, the one big expansion project that we worked on in two thousand nineteen was Warrior Manufacturing, uh, Warrior came to Hutchinson first in two thousand six. Uh, they started off with a ninety-two thousand square foot facility, so as of two thousand nineteen, they had, uh, gotten up to sixty-three jobs. I remember when we first brought them to Hutchinson, the initial goal was fifteen jobs, so now it's four times that and then they're adding on, so the project last year was an addition of almost forty-one thousand square feet. Uh, three point four million dollar project and then over the next couple of years, they're gonna add five new jobs. Uh, the pay's gonna be a minimum of twelve oh six, I think. Based on Warrior's pay scale, it's probably gonna be probably closer to double that amount. Um, the new, uh, facility, it's mostly warehouse, but then also it's kind of receiving and shipping and stuff like that, so it really helps them get more efficient with their production processes inside their original building. And, uh, to help make the project, uh, successful, the E D A, we provided a, a TIF district to help offset some of the costs of soil corrections on that site, that's one of the things that we're discovering in the industrial park is there's a lot of black soil out there, so uh, when you do building projects, you gotta move a lot of black dirt out of the way first, so, uh, the E D A pitched in with that TIF district to kind of help, uh, offset some of those costs. Um, grant writing, that's something that we're trying to be very intentional about every year, so, um, when I set my goals for the year with the E D A board, we always have it on there to see if we can't reel in a grant for at least a hundred thousand dollars. And in two thousand nineteen, we were, we were able to get one grant from, uh, the state of Minnesota, the Department of Employment and Economic Development. That was three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for Technology Drive. And then since two thousand six, we've obtained seventeen grants over the years totaling five and a half million dollars, so. And then since two thousand six, we've obtained seventeen grants over the years totaling five and a half million dollars, so um, the grant money, that actually, uh, that more than offsets the entire budget of our department for that whole time, so we're a net positive, I guess. Next. Um, and then, as I said, the grant was for Technology Drive, so this was part of bringing Upanor to town a couple of years ago. The existing driveway that was there, that used to be there, uh, on the east side of the community over by America Inn. Uh, it was a privately owned driveway that was owned by TDK. And when TDK sold the building, the big building, the big manufacturing building to Upanor, one of the things that Upanor had requested was, well, we need a, a public access here so that everybody has access to it. And then the existing roadway was quite frankly, uh, at the end of its design life, it was falling apart. So something had to happen. Um, working with TDK and Upanor in particular, uh, we were able to go out to uh, deed and get this grant. And then do a, do a project there to create a new city street, so um, now that's Technology Drive, I believe, and uh, uh, a very nice roadway that serves both Upanor, TDK and MITGI, so. And then um, the, the grant covered about half of it, almost half of it, and then the balance of that project is assessed back to Upanor. Um, the Hutchinson Enterprise Center, our small business incubator, that continues to do well. We have three client companies out there. It's RD Machine, Innovative Foam and Laser Dynamics. In, in 2019, everything was rolling along pretty good. I know RD Machine is very busy, they've got a lot of work. And um, it was just a great fit for them because they were out of space at their main building. They just couldn't cram in any more machines. So they rented two thousand square feet from us at the Enterprise Center, and then they kind of moved into water jet cutting. And part of that was just internalizing work that they used to send out for, so they just brought that all in-house, which helps them uh, be more efficient and more profitable. And then now they're actually attracting other kinds of work to uh, be done on this water jet cutter. So um, RD Machine, when they rented that space from us, they said, okay, we wanna, we're gonna branch off into this water jet cutting area. And then if it all goes successful, that's gonna hopefully trigger an expansion for RD Machine going down the road. So I think that experiment is working out really well. Um, Innovative Foam had a very good year in 2019. They were doing, they were doing really well. And um, just busy all the time with making their, their styrofoam signs and monument signs and so forth. Uh, the one example there, I put on the picture at the bottom, you know, that's the type of thing that Innovative Foam does, is they make these big uh, monument signs. And we ordered one for the Enterprise Center so that we could advertise the companies that we have in residence and then the Small Business Development Center as well. And um, and then the third company was Laser Dynamics, so that one is continuing to uh, go along. I think they had uh, and I'll just say an okay year in 2019. And uh, we have them connected with the Small Business Development Center for ongoing coaching and mentoring and building their business. So that one, we'll have to see how that one, how that goes. Um, the other piece of it is that we actually have a satellite office of the Small Business Development Center. In our area, the regional office is actually all the way over in Marshall, and so it was pretty difficult for counselors to be able to operate in Hutchinson because they didn't have a place to be. I mean, they would have to meet their clients in a coffee shop or whatever, and that was far from ideal, so um, what we did is we offered them office space at the Enterprise Center pro bono. And then the SBDC is onsite, which helps everything that we're trying to do, and it helps them. So it's really a win-win situation and that's been a terrific uh, partnership. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the one improvement we made to the, to the site as we added our monument sign, that was always in the plan from the first day, it's just didn't get executed until the very end, so uh, that got done in 2019 and Innovative Foam did the bulk of that work and I think it turned out really nice. Uh, another big area of emphasis for the EDA is skilled workforce development, and that's because, you know, as I'm out visiting our local companies, visiting our manufacturers, pretty much every single one says that the biggest challenge they have is finding the skilled, trained workers they need to be successful. And so that puts skilled workforce development pretty close to the top of the agenda for the, for the EDA. So in 2019, you know, it was really just more supporting Tiger Path. We just, that's our, our uh, main effort. And um, over the course of the year, we did a few different things, so I mean, just supporting Tiger Path in general. Um, as you can imagine, the, the, the whole Tiger Path concept, it gets a lot of attention around the state of Minnesota, and I get phone calls pretty regularly to come and do a presentation and share with other communities what we're doing in Hutchinson and how we do it. It's really been a extremely successful and when people hear about what we're doing here in Hutchinson, they are just quite frankly amazed. So over the course of 2019, I did six different presentations. Um, we hosted our own conference about Tiger Path here in Hutchinson and that was a big success. We had a over a hundred people attend and it was literally from the four corners of Minnesota. I mean, people from Duluth, people from East Grand Forks, people from southeastern Minnesota, people from Worthington, I think, I mean, they just came from everywhere to find out what we're doing here in Hutchinson. So it was really a fun event. Um, another highlight last year is that Senator Tina Smith visited and toured the high school and toured the Center for Technical Excellence that we have over at the high school. And then we did a roundtable with her and she's quizzing us about what we're doing and how we're doing it because she's heard about it and she wants to learn more about it. And then uh, while she was visiting in Hutchinson, she unveiled uh, Senate Bill uh, two seven seven five, which is a, it's, it's a proposal basically to take Tiger Path on a national level. I mean, you read through the, the language of the bill, I mean, it's Tiger Path, it's what we're doing here. And so she's proposing that this become a federally funded thing and that it be rolled out nationwide, so uh, we'll see where that goes. I think with current events, that's probably all on the back burner, but you know, it's still floating out there and I think just a tremendous uh, recognition of what we're doing here in Hutchinson. So other things in this area is that um, you know, the EDA, we really spearheaded a lot of the fundraising to help create the Center for Technical Excellence over at Hutchinson High School. They picked up one new piece of equipment in 2019, that uh, that blue plasma table, and you know, the, the one that they had in there before was kind of old and worn out and it was sort of a hobby model, it was small. And the one thing that we always emphasize with Tiger Path is we want to get students on real-world equipment. So this is the same exact equipment that you're gonna find at a manufacturer around town. And latest example is the plasma table. I mean, that's an industrial level professional plasma table. It's not a toy plasma table, it's, it's the real deal. Uh, and we think that's a real critical component. If we're training young people to be able to take these skilled jobs at our manufacturers, we want to get them on the real machines. And the students love it, the teachers love it, and naturally, the manufacturers in town, they love that. Uh, so that's been a huge success, so over the last few years. Oh, go ahead.
And that's for metal cutting?
Yes, yep, you uh, you put a big sheet of metal on it, maybe it's four foot square or whatever, and then it'll use a plasma jet to cut that however uh, however you want it to be cut. So I think it can cut maybe a quarter inch thick or something. I mean, it's really pretty remarkable.
Steve, you can, you can make little cutouts of uh, like stars. Yeah, like if you want fifty stars, you just program it, you hit the button and they just cut them out or like little moons or whatever, whatever shapes you want to cut, they just, it just blasts them out real quick. And real, real good quality and nice neat lines?
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all computer controlled, uh, so it's a CNC controlled, computer numerical controlled machine, so I mean, the students program it, and I mean, it's literally, if you can think of it, they can make it. I mean, it's just amazing. You know, the plasma table is just one piece of it. They've got so much equipment, I mean, they can make literally anything. And I mean, I have, you know, we bring in people from private industry. I gave, I gave, one time I gave a tour, actually, this, I gave a tour to the guys from Zephyr Wind Services, and this was before they bought the building, because I wanted to show them this is what we're doing to train your workers in the future. So I said, come on over to the high school and take a tour. And I showed them everything that we're doing. They were just floored. They just couldn't believe, they've never seen anything like it, and they just thought it was the greatest thing ever. And I, you know, I don't doubt for one second that that was one piece of the puzzle that made them say Hutchinson is the place. And we can say the same thing for Upanor. Um, yeah, whenever we bring companies through there, they're all simply astounded at what we have and what we're doing and how we're doing it, so it's fun.
Um, Miles, Miles, that, you know, up at Redline Equipment, you know, um, Matt was cutting stuff out for, for uh, Zephyr. You know, and now, I think that was uh, inch and a half thick material, big plates.
Pretty amazing, the stuff that can get done, that's for sure. Um, the other piece that we did for Tiger Path is that, you know, we had to get a Tiger, uh, a Parents Guide put together for the Moms and Dads, so uh, we worked on that last summer in conjunction with the school district, and that's just another example of the tremendous partnerships that we have between industry, the city, the EDA, Ridgewater College, and the high school to be able to do all this stuff, so um, excuse me. We're, we're just super excited and super, um, yeah, we're just proud of everything that's going on with Tiger Path, and it's really all the partnerships that really make this stuff happen, so, next slide. Um, marketing, we, you know, we want to be marketing and uh, promoting the community because we're always trying to find the next client for the industrial park. We're looking for precision high-tech manufacturers. We have pretty close to thirty um, high-tech manufacturers in Hutchinson, and we're always looking to add to that number, so the most important thing that we can be doing to promote Hutchinson that way is to do a great job of taking care of our existing customers, so that's our business retention and expansion program. Uh, we also put a lot of emphasis on our EDA website and social media because that's the, that's the channel that companies that are looking to expand, they, they go on the internet. That's where they do their homework, that's where they do their research, that's where they're prospecting for uh, communities to expand in. And then also, we're trying to be very intentional about building our relationship with the, the state, the Department of Employment and Economic Development. We want to have a really good reputation with those guys. We want to make sure that we deliver projects for them uh, that make them look good and make them happy. Um, so we're really trying to be very intentional about that. Um, and then also, we're trying to build our brand because it's something that manufacturers pay attention to. Uh, when they see Minnesota's manufacturing city, that gets them curious, that gets them going online, that gets them calling me. And they go, well, why are you Minnesota's manufacturing city? And, and then I tell them and it clicks and they go, you know, maybe we need to come over there and visit, and it works. Um, and then also, it really gets to corporate site selectors. Uh, corporate site selector, that's like a real estate agent that specializes with manufacturers to find places for them to expand into. So we're trying to be very intentional about cultivating relationships with corporate site selectors and to be able to really speak the language that they are using because we feel like we can meet their needs, we can satisfy their requirements. They in turn can make their clients happy, and then we get a new company and they get a satisfied client and everybody wins. And then the other piece that we're doing is we joined the Minnesota Marketing Partnership, and again, that's just another uh, method for us to be able to raise our profile, and the Minnesota Marketing Partnership, that's operated through deed at the state. And that really is kind of more focused on a national and international level. Um, we just want to get the name Hutchinson out there and help you know, potential companies uh, understand what we have to offer, and we think we have a lot to offer. Next slide. Um, other activities for the uh, Economic Development Authority, you know, we run a number of downtown grant and loan programs, so for 2019, we rolled out uh, fourteen sign and awning grants totaling twelve thousand nine hundred ninety. That just puts new signs and new awnings on businesses on Main Street and then uh, a little bit on Franklin and a little bit on Hassan as well. And then we also did six facade improvement grants over the year totaling twenty-one thousand dollars. And then there was one low-interest commercial rehabilitation loan for uh, almost twenty-one thousand that we provided, so this is just, we just think it's super important to keep Main Street looking tippity-top, and so we put money into it every single year. And that's a very um, intentional process, so. Um, we also provide staffing support for the Hutchinson Downtown Association. Uh, that's ninety-six percent of that is my assistant Madison, she takes care of that stuff. But we help out with Picnic in the Park, Main Street Christmas, the Christmas tree tops, the summer flower pots, provide a lot of support for the farmer's market, so um, that all just goes hand in hand with our support for the downtown. We gotta have a strong downtown, so we, we uh, put a lot of effort into that. Next slide. For 2020 going ahead, um, you know, we're halfway through 2020, so some of this is in the history books already, but we're always focused on downtown redevelopment, and so we're looking at opportunities to redevelop the area around the Crow River and around the dam. Uh, so we got a number of projects underway there, and I'm talking with a number of developers about possible projects. We're continuing to pursue that vigorously. We have one grant application pending uh, with FEMA, and uh, that's for the acquisition of some properties down by the river. And if we're successful, we're gonna be acquiring some properties and then removing them, and then that'll help set the stage for redevelopment of that area, so I'm told that we're supposed to hear in September or October, uh, if we get the grant or not, so we'll, we'll see what happens. Um, every year, we've got a goal to get one new company from the industrial parks, that's already done. I guess I'll be back next year to talk about that. Um, one of the goals is I want to cultivate a relationship with St. Cloud State University. They have an MBA program. And I want to make friends with those guys and get them involved with the Hutchinson Enterprise Center because MBA students, they need to do projects and they need to get real-world experience. They could be helping out our client companies in the incubator, so then it's a win for our companies and it's a win for the MBA students, so that's kind of two pieces I want to bring together. That's on my list of things to do for this year. Um, as always, we will continue our support of Tiger Path. This year, it's really gonna be interesting, just, you know, with COVID and everything, it just really throws a monkey wrench into a lot of things, so we'll, we'll have to see how it all goes. Um, one project I'm actually working on right now is we're working to get our EDA website updated and modernized. Um, and again, that's aimed pretty specifically at the corporate site selector crowd and then also manufacturers. We want to be able to put the information on there that they want to see and raise Hutchinson's profile accordingly. Um, every year, we make a goal of it to go out and get at least a hundred thousand in grants, so we'll see how that works. Um, finish up our EDA strategic plan, so that's actually already done, and then it's been a goal for the last decade, I would say. Uh, or two decades almost, to try and get some kind of activity on a county level for economic development, so that's an ongoing effort and we'll keep pushing on that, so um, that's it for that one, I guess. Um, just real quick, you know, I mean, our success is really built on the fact that we've got great citizen involvement. And so this is our EDA Board of Directors, it's a seven-member Board of Directors. Mary and Chad, of course, there represent the City Council. And then uh, Mike Cannon, Darren Vanderheiden, who's our high school su- or, I mean, the school district superintendent. Corey Sterns with Sternswood, Johnny Block, then Mike McGraw, uh, State Farm Insurance, they're the EDA Board. And then um, um, we have Jeremy Carter from Utilities on that as a non-voting ex-officio member because we really want to have a good partnership and connection with Utilities. And then um, and then um, helping the EDA Board is the finance team, so we have Mike Cannon and Corey Sterns, they represent the EDA Board on the finance team. And then we have Anthony Hanson, who's local banker, Scott Ziegler, who's an accountant, Josh Carg, he uh, works for Heartland Egg Systems, Jack Daggett with Pride Solutions, Ben King is an attorney in town. And Eric, Eric Lipke, he works for Midwest Industrial Tool Grind, so that's the finance team, and they are gracious enough to lend their uh, experience and expertise to help us do a good job at the EDA. So I think that's it. I want to say uh, especially thank you for your support, uh, Mayor and Council. We, we, I think we get a lot of good things done here in Hutchinson, and a big reason for that is the fact that we have total support. And I um, I talk with other economic development people around the state and I tell them the things that we're doing and they're always amazed. And I say, well, City Council's behind us all the way and City Staff is behind us all the way. And I say, well, City Council's behind us all the way and City Staff is behind us all the way, gets pretty easy when you have that much support. So I just want to thank you for that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, great report, Miles, and thanks to the board, Mary, Chad and everyone else. I guess when you talk about marketing and branding, there'll be an opportunity possibly with the cities. Is that, uh, gets unfolded as well and to hopefully help. Uh, raise some awareness a little bit more with that. Um, has Zephyr ever talked about possibly erecting a wind turbine, you know, for their use? Was just curious about that.
No, they've never really, um, they've never, never really said anything about that, I mean, the one thing they did say is they did want to get one. To have in the building more for when they have tours and if they have school groups come through and then they'll have something for show and tell. So I do know that that's on their list.
All right, anything else for Miles? Thanks, Miles.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, uh, review of Amaresco Energy Savings Investment Grade Audit Report. I believe Mr. Paulson will be addressing the council in regards to that.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Um, if you recall, uh, late twenty eighteen into twenty nineteen, City in, uh, initiated a conversation or project with Amaresco. Uh, it's similar, uh, to the two thousand and ten Energy Performance Contract that we did. Uh, included with that included, uh, investment grade audit. Um, what you see before you tonight included in your packet is, uh, that actual investment grade audit that was produced by Amaresco. Through those findings and investigations that were conducted in partnership with them and their staff. And then, uh, City Staff, uh, we reviewed facility improvements, uh, on many of our city facilities. Um, I didn't trying to identify, uh, low-cost improvements or cost-effective improvements from an energy efficiency standpoint. Um, ultimately, in the end, the report produced a number of those, um, different energy conservation measures. That were, um, further developed and further assessed, identifying potential costs, potential cost savings. Um, and then through multiple meetings, City Staff had met with Amaresco to review the proposed projects that they identified. No different than in two thousand and ten, uh, the city, the city and the city staff had identified a lot of similar projects. Um, it's something that, um, based on the output of the two thousand and ten analysis that was completed. Um, the city initiated the fi- or the Facilities Committee Process, identifying prioritize prioritization of facility improvements. Um, so when they came through this time around, um, there wasn't nearly as many things that were cost-effective to implement. Um, which was no surprise, um, we had been reinvesting in our facilities over the most recent years. Um, through that process, we dedicated funding to making those improvements. Um, whenever we do those improvements, uh, we try to incorporate energy efficiency. Um, even if it's not something that was done specifically for energy efficiency, if it's a roof, we might add, uh, additional layer of insulation, things along those lines. So, uh, when we worked through the, the assessment with Amaresco. Um, as I noted, there were four E C Ms or Energy Conservation Measures that they had identified. Um, one was LED lighting retrofits throughout our city facilities. Um, in recent years, we had already began that process, uh, I think beginning in about two thousand and eighteen. Right around the time or shortly before we started this process with Amaresco. Um, we started doing actually energy, or energy efficiency LED lighting retrofits in our facilities. Um, we started making progress along that line and ultimately, uh, we decided to continue to do that. Um, that's something that we have been budgeting for within our facilities improvements. Um, so we plan to continue to do that, implement those and implement those measures throughout time. Um, another one was, uh, LED street lighting. Um, that's something that we had also been talking about prior to Amaresco's involvement and, uh, partnership. Um, they basically went through, identified, uh, full inventory of our lighting, which we already had a pretty good handle on. But it was nice to get that confirmation from them to be able to identify, okay, which ones are, uh, more energy efficient? Which ones will actually see a better improvement from? Um, it does, uh, identify only the energy efficient, the ones with the bigger energy efficiency improvements. Um, there's certain LED retrofits in our street lighting system that didn't necessarily make financial sense from, uh, just a strict payback standpoint. So it wasn't included in their final report, um, in the sense that it wouldn't have a self-payback that would comply with the. Uh, State of Minnesota's Energy Performance and Contracting Rule. Um, so it was any, anything in excess of basically twenty years payback, so there were a number of, uh, LED streetlights that were excluded from the report. Um, the last section in the report also identifies things that the city could also implement if we were going to make capital investments into the project. Um, so that's something that was identified, something that we did talk about, but something that wasn't included in the fore identified E C Ms. Uh, two, the two remaining E C Ms included, um, some controls retrofits at City Center and then also the Event Center. Um, those two facilities have had some controls issues in recent years. Um, one of the things that we've done, uh, since we initiated this process with Amaresco, we learned a lot in working with them, talking with their staff. Um, identifying some of what are those potential solutions might look like, what some of those costs may be. Um, so likewise, we looked at incorporating those into our own facilities process. And, uh, we continue to make ground on developing those project and moving those forward. Um, last and certainly not least, uh, it seems like the smallest one, but it's oftentimes overlooked. Is an, uh, energy efficiency envelope improvements, um, the simple things, the door sweeps, the weather stripping around doors. And sealing up your buildings nice and tight, windows, different things like that. A lot of times those are smaller projects, um, there's a lot of them, they add up, of course, uh, and they could produce some significant energy. But it's something that we've, as staff, felt we have the capacity to implement internally on our own. The investment grade audit that was produced by Amaresco, if you recall twenty ten, um, for those of you that weren't involved in that original project. Um, this cost of this investment grade audit would have been rolled into the total project cost. If we would have moved forward with, uh, project with Amaresco, um, if we would have had them help procure, manage. Um, and cover those costs, the, the actual cost of those four E C Ms are included in the report, I believe they're on page four. Um, and once we were able to review that with them, staff had reviewed it internally with the Facilities Committee and we talked about it over a number of months. Um, ultimately, we feel that we can implement a lot of these things, uh, on our own. Um, even to be able to do some of the things that weren't necessarily specific, energy conservation measures that had less than a twenty-year payback. Um, we believe that we can do some of those things because we don't necessarily have the overhead that Amaresco has, the markups and those types of things. A great example and the primary project identified in the E C Ms was the LED street lighting. Um, the LED street lighting, um, through stretching that project out over a number of years is something, uh, we'll touch base on here as well. Um, when staff met with Amaresco, we got their cost estimates and how they would deliver that project over time. Um, once we were able to then meet with Hutch Utilities, review their costs of materials, their costs of labor. Um, to spread that out over a number of years, rather than doing, uh, bulb switch outs, which we do every year. Uh, on an annual basis in the cooperative agreement that we have with Hutch Utilities. Um, we would in essence start to offset, rather than them going to switch out a bulb at a, at a, at a street light fixture that's existing. Rather than switching out the bulb, we would just have them switch the whole fixture. So in essence, we would be offsetting the labor costs that we're already paying for. And then instead of switching the bulb, we're replacing the fixture, so in essence, we can eliminate a, a lot of the labor costs, the cost that we are already. Going to experience, the cost that we are already planning and anticipating to have over time. So, um, based on the cost estimates for the materials for Hutch Utilities, working with the city to procure the materials. And then to implement the labor over a period of, I believe, seven to eight years is what we estimate before we can get through all of our city streetlights. Um, we would be able to do it much more cost-effectively than working with Amaresco in partnership, like I said, for a number of reasons. If it's, uh, maybe they had a higher cost of materials to purchase it. Uh, we've been buying, uh, the LE or the LED Granville fixtures from Hallifane for the last number of years. Anytime we do a streetlight improvement, those are the type of, those are the exact fixtures that we've already been purchasing. So it would be in line with the, the fixtures we're already buying, it would be in line with the globes that we use. Um, we wouldn't be replacing globes unless they're broken. Um, that's a huge cost with LED lighting retrofits, if you have to replace the globes, the fixtures, the poles. Um, all of those components at one time, it gets to be really, really expensive and cost prohibitive. Um, if you're, if you need to do it, you need to do those things. And there are some poles that we need to replace over time, that's also factored in using, um, infrastructure maintenance funds to do that over a period of time. So the information that Amaresco provided as part of this investment grade audit report, we're basically taking that, then pulling it back apart. And then basically being able to identify, okay, this is how we're going to fund this over time, this is how we're going to implement these projects. Using the existing funding sources that we already have in place. And then also utilizing the staff and labor and the agreements that we have with, uh, Hutchinson Utilities. So, um, ultimately, in the end, the city recommends that, um, we move forward with implementing these projects on our own. Um, like I said, in multiple meetings that staff had had with Amaresco, with finance, admin, facilities, to be able to come to that conclusion. It was difficult from Amaresco to be able to acknowledge that, that, hey, we had identified projects that have a less than twenty-year payback. You guys can implement these things, we believe we can do it for cheaper, we can believe we can do it just as effective, if not more effective from a cost standpoint. So, uh, the investment grade audit, uh, if you recall, back when we initially implemented it, it come with a thirty-five thousand dollar and change price tag. If we don't implement a project with Amaresco, that we would in essence pay them that amount for the investment grade ro- audit in this, in the report that they've provided. Um, with that, I guess I, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the streetlights, regarding any of the E C Ms that have been identified. Um, like I said, Kent's been involved in many of these discussions as well, Matt as well too, he's been, uh, breast of a lot of these discussions too over time. So, um, one thing worth noting, um, the delay associated with this. Um, our primary point of contact has been John Neville with Amaresco since we started that conversation with them back in two thousand and nine. Um, John Neville has recently left Amaresco, um, we're working with Don Fisher, Don is someone that we worked with on this project as well. But there was some, uh, transition time there as well. Um, but in any event, um, we're grateful for the work that they did, the partnership that we have with them. Um, to be able to provide this information now that we can disseminate it, break it down and implement those projects on our own. We still feel there's value there and, um, feel like we got our, um, got the effort out of them that I believe we're compensating them for. Any questions?
Do, do, do we have to approve anything or just accept the report? Uh, the expenditure was already built into the contract itself.
Correct, yeah, the actual expenditure for it was as part of the, uh, check roll here tonight. Um, I don't believe we need any formal action to accept the report. It's just a communication.
Yeah, correct, it's under communications and so there's no, there's no need for us to formally accept it, so.
So is there any other questions for John?
Um, just to reiterate, uh, you know, again, I remember when we even talked about this. You know, there was questions about it because there potentially would be a cost. You still feel like there's a benefit because it, one reaffirms, you know, some of what we're doing. But then I would suppose, you know, you get updated on new technology and things like that as well. Um, do you see a benefit down the road, uh, maybe another one? Or, you know, our staff has gotten a good handle now on things to look at and understand, uh, they can do it themselves.
Right, I think it really depends on has technologies evolve, as, uh, our community needs continue to evolve too. Um, who knows, um, heaven forbid, we have L G A issues in the future. Um, that's a lot of times what these types of performance contracts are used for. If you have to defer facility maintenance over a period of time, all of a sudden you fall so far behind that the existing funds. Once you can get back to that point where you were funding them previously, now all of a sudden you don't have enough resources to implement those things. That's where performance contracts really valuable. Um, they can provide the funding mechanism, they can provide the guarantee, it's no added tax cost, any additional levy costs associated with that. It really depends on the specific needs of the community and those change over time. Um, so, uh, based on the current, the current structure that we have within our, within our community and how we fund and finance facility improvements. Um, currently, yeah, it just didn't make sense, so it was, like you said, it was really good to reaffirm. Um, that we have a good handle on those things, that we have proper funding mechanisms in place to be able to deliver. What can be significant projects. Um, granted, we might have to do those over a period of years rather than all at once, but, um, yeah, it was a great exercise to work through that. Like I said, reaffirm what we're doing and is doing the right thing and certainly, yeah, over time, things change, technologies. Um, who knows what happens with microgrids or batteries or, you know, it could be a number of different technologies that evolve. And, uh, maybe there will be an opportunity in the future and, yeah, we leave that, that, um, circuit open for future use as well.
You know, and I'll just add too, I think the way that we've approached facilities, building in general. Is more conscientious of looking at, you know, these types of improvements within our facilities than maybe we were ten years ago. You know, as we've already started just conversations with the, the police station, we've, you know, part of our, our. P for construction management references, you know, lead building and, um, sustainable practices. Uh, that we want to look at when it comes to construction, so I think even from, um, just where we look at it from a staffing standpoint. And as a full body, we, we're trying to be a little bit more focused on looking at these types of improvements. You can even point to the, the Rack Center roof project, yes, we did the roof, but we're also updating the lighting at the same time that we're doing that to, to be more energy efficient.
Yeah, and insulation and, uh, a number of other things incorporated as part of that project and. Um, yeah, it's a great point too, with new buildings, it's unique in the sense that there's the best time to do sustainability improvements in a new building. It is when you're building a new building, if you're going to make it more efficient or, uh, have more efficient, uh, components, equipment within that facility. That's the time to do it and that's important that, um, yeah, and the energy efficiency, the things that we started with, uh, two thousand and six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Um, a lot of that leads back to even when we compost was developed, it's Hutchinson looking forward and. Um, identifying what opportunities lead forward into the future and, um, no different than, um, building a more efficient P D. Um, that's a great example of that and it starts with the efficiency and it starts with having a vision and we continue that message.
Just wanted to say one other thing and I like the approach with the LED streetlights, uh, just incorporating, replacing them. As we're doing other maintenance, uh, in the future with the LEDs, that'll reduce. Future maintenance going forward, but the other big benefit I see is if we replaced everything all at once. Twenty years down the road, they're all gonna start having to be replaced all at once. This way it stretches it out, makes it a lot more manageable, so I think it's a good plan, thanks.
Anything else for John? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, update on CARES Act funding and proposed use of funds.
Uh, Mayor and Council, you may recall, we had a conversation on, uh, our CARES funding at the, the last council meeting. And there was, uh, some direction given by the council, the staff at that point, so we wanted to spend some time. I'm kind of bringing it back to let you know where we're at, kind of get your opinion, make sure we're going down, I guess, the right path or in the right direction. So we've got myself, I'm Andy Reed and Miles Supot will all be a, a part of this conversation here. If you may recall, we are expected to receive potentially this week, um, just over a million dollars in CARES funding. One million seventy-four thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars to be exact. Um, at the last council meeting, the, the emphasis the council gave to staff was wanting to see a focus on that money going to, to small businesses. And so what we've looked at, what we've, what we're proposing, um, for the council to consider. Um, we're kind of looking for your feedback, if we, if you guys feel like we're in the right direction, we'll, we'll have some formal action at our next meeting. Both what we're planning on doing is setting aside, uh, about two hundred thousand dollars for the city to, to reimburse ourselves. Within the, with, with those costs for, um, COVID nineteen related expenses. Um, then we would set aside seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, that would go to a small business assistance package. And I'll have Miles touch on that here in a little bit and what that would look like or what the framework of, of that early discussion has been. And that, then that would leave us with roughly about a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, of some money that we'd set aside for potential consumer help. Um, I'll, I'll admit, we're still kind of waiting to see, there's been some conversations about some, some assistance coming down the state level. Along those lines, we know there's some potential for some money going to some housing agencies. And so that would still give us a little bit of flexibility, just to kind of wait to see what happens with that money, so we don't double up. We very well could turn around and use that hundred and twenty-four thousand to put back into small businesses. Or if we have some, uh, additional city expenses that come up between now and then too, that's, uh, that's a possibility as well. Um, but before we kind of open up for some feedback and, and questions from the council, I wanted to hand it over to, to Miles to kind of give you a little. Um, I guess some feedback and what the E D A has been working on in regards to a small business package. So with that, I want to share my screen here. And hand it over to Miles.
Okay, Mayor and Council, um.
Matt brought this to us a couple of weeks ago to come up with some ideas on how we could put together a business assistance program from the funding that you allocated for that purpose. So we put together a team. Wanted to get some expertise and some different perspectives. So we, we included someone from the Small Business Development Center because they work with small businesses all the time. We have representation from retail, from manufacturing, from banking. Andy Reed from the city's on there and then I'm on there as well. And so between us, we brainstormed and went back and forth on a number of different ideas. So we want to share with you tonight what we've come up with and then get your guidance. If we're on the right track or if we need to make some adjustments or, or whatever. So I'll give you a quick overview and then we'll go from there. Next slide. Basically, what we're looking at is a forgivable loan program that would be for small businesses. So it'd be just a regular forgivable loan. It would be a six month term with no interest, no payments. And then there's a mechanism in there that it can get forgiven. And then what we were looking at is amounts that would range from a minimum of five thousand dollars up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. We had quite a bit of discussion about what would be the appropriate amount. And I think the consensus among our committee was that if we're going to provide assistance, we just be careful that it's not token assistance. We want to provide enough financial assistance that's actually going to make a real difference and help keep companies alive, basically. So that's why we kind of settled on the numbers that we, we did. Next slide. So then the eligibility, I mean, we're aiming it primarily at small businesses. And so here in Hutchinson, we thought that would be defined as those companies with annual gross revenue or sales, that'd be four million dollars or less, thirty full time equivalent employees or less. And then it would be required that the owner reside in Minnesota. We didn't want to, we didn't think it appropriate to provide assistance for corporately owned businesses that may be in other parts of the United States. Also, we thought we would make a mechanism so that certain nonprofits could apply for assistance because they're getting hit really hard by this whole thing. So we thought, well, we should make some provision for them. And then, of course, any recipient would have to be within the city limits of Hutchinson. Eligible uses of the funds, it's pretty much dictated by the rules that came down to us from the federal level. They, they sent a number of pages of rules that were really pretty interesting, I guess, pretty hard to decipher, actually. So it was a real challenge. But eligible uses of funds would be mortgage or rent payments. It would be payroll costs. It would be utility payments, inventory costs, costs for personal protective equipment, mask cleaners, public safety items like plexiglass screens and things like that. And then cost to restart the business after a shutdown. And this would be expenses that the applicant would incur between March first and December thirty first of this year. So next slide. As I mentioned previously, the conditions for loan forgiveness would be pretty easy. Basically, they just have to provide documentation to the city that what they spent the money on is an allowed qualified cost. From the city's end of it, we got to be super careful that we go right down the middle of the road and ensure that the funds get used for the purpose intended, that everything is documented right to the last penny and that we have that all available in case, you know, we get inspected or the auditor shows up, we want to show them that we did everything right down the line. And then the other part of the forgiveness would be that the applicant has to certify that the funds are not used for expenses that were covered by other pandemic aid programs. So we just want to try to avoid any double dipping, I guess, that way. Next slide. And then what we set up, we thought, you know, we would just have a hundred point scale. So I mean, companies would provide us with the information that we need to make a determination. There would be a sliding scale to award to determine how much of a loan they would qualify for. So points would be awarded for annual gross revenue or sales. So that would be a quarter of the points there. Number of full time equivalent employees as of February first, twenty twenty. So this would be right before the pandemic starts. And then the third criteria would be the percentage decline in the net profits. And then we would compare the second quarter of twenty nineteen, which was normal times versus second quarter of twenty twenty, which would be pandemic. Cause then we can measure hopefully how hard each company has been hit by, by the pandemic. So that's how the points would get awarded. And then there would be a, a matrix that we have developed that would determine the amount of assistance that they would qualify for. So part of our thought process was that, you know, it, it's all aimed at smaller businesses, but then we're kind of the, the annual gross revenue points and the number of full time equivalent points, that's going to favor the bigger companies in our pool, presumably because they would have greater expenses. So then they would need more, more help. But then also the percentage decline, that measures how hard everybody got hit. So then that balances everything out. So we thought that would be half the points. Next slide. Then there's a, there's kind of a bonus point thing that we thought of too, that once we did the calculation, there would be fifteen additional points that would get awarded specifically for businesses that were deemed non-essential and closed down by the governor's executive order. So that would be your restaurants in particular, it would be beauty parlors, it would be gyms and things like that, that were physically restricted from operating. So we thought, well, we should give them a little bit of a, of a, of a benefit that way. Next slide. And then, like I said, for, for the forgiveness, I think I already talked about this, but I mean, all they gotta do is provide documentation for our purposes. And that's pretty much all that would be required. And then just certify that they didn't get any other assistance from other programs. So I guess the question I have, that's just a quick overview. It's not the final product. I mean, I think we're still going to be tweaking it and adjusting it and perfecting it. But I guess in general terms, from the council's perspective, I mean, does this look okay? Are we on the right track? And that would be my question.
I think.
Miles, this is Dave Sebastian. It looks really good. I, I like the way you set up the point system and I think a lot of people will be able to benefit from that. I guess a question I have is, is we have some people that are maybe don't understand all of the qualifications as far as the legality of them. Would there be any assistance provided for them that could be available?
Right. Yes, we will. Yep. I think, you know, as we go forward, I think what we're going to do is we're going to develop an online application so that people can just go to their computer and fill it out. But then we'll have a, a phone number and all that, that they can just call me or call my assistant, Maddie, and then we can just walk them through it, whatever they need. They can do it online. We'll also have paper applications, obviously, too. So we'll, we'll help them every step of the way.
Okay, thank you.
And Miles, if you modeled the application after the PPP loan, it was pretty simple. You know, it took about ten minutes to fill out and was about as painless as it got.
Yeah. Yep. And that's, that's what we want to do too. I think, I mean, the, the first word I wrote down is simple. I mean, we just want this to be simple to administer. We want it to be simple to fill out. We want it to be simple that they can provide the documentation that they need. This should all be the required documentation from the applicants. That should be stuff that they already have on their computer. And so we just want to make it as simple as possible and as transparent as possible too, so that anybody can look and figure out the score of the points. I mean, there's no mystery to it whatsoever. So we just, simple, simple, simple.
Oh, go ahead and marry.
Miles, do you want to just talk a little bit about the nonprofits? I think, you know, some people are probably going, why is it, why would they be getting this?
You know, and I, I don't know if I can totally answer that. I mean, we do know that a lot of nonprofits, they depend on donations. And they have been, I think some of them have been really hit by this pandemic. And, you know, some of these nonprofits, they might be in danger of going away altogether. And then that would be really to the detriment of the community. So I think there was a little bit of thinking that if we can provide a little boost for some of them, not all of them, of course. But if, if they've been really hit by the pandemic, then maybe that would merit some consideration. So I think that was really the, the rationale. So some arts organizations, for example, might have been, I mean, their existence might be jeopardized. And so I think that was the thought process.
Oh, actually, Miles, I, I can kind of, you know, most of the nonprofits go by fundraising. And with the pandemic, they couldn't do any fundraising at all. So that, I think that's probably why the nonprofits is in there, which is good. Like you said, some of them are going to go away because they couldn't hold their fundraisers.
Exactly. Yep, that's exactly it. And then not all nonprofits, obviously. I mean, we, we're going to have some that are just not going to be, you know, like churches and religious organizations. I don't think that would be appropriate. There'll be some other ones that'll probably get screened out. But there's a number of them that you know, like you say, I mean, their revenue has totally gone away. And so, and then they don't qualify for any of these other assistance programs. So if that's the case, then that would be the type that potentially could get some of this.
Yeah, Miles, I do like that you are going to assist people in, in applying for it. That is, that's a great move on you guys on your part.
Miles, that brings up a question. Is that a five oh one C three or can that be a five oh one C eight?
I think as long as it's a nonprofit status, it would be either one, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. You know, some of these, once we get the, you know, our next step really is to, we gotta really, if we're on the right track, if the city council thinks we're doing okay, then our next step is really to sit down and write some little bit more detailed program rules just to really get everything down in black and white and perfect it and make sure that, you know, there's no holes in it or no loopholes. We want to make it as tight as we can. So we got to go through that process. And then I think what the plan is, is that once we've got the rules written, an application form designed, the loan agreement written, all that stuff, then we would come back to the city council in two weeks, show you what we have and we'll have a resolution that would make this all official. And then we would, we would launch it at that point.
I think it sounds good. Thank you, Miles.
Yeah, I think you have full support from the council.
Miles, do you have any sense of how many businesses are out there potentially that could take advantage of this, that fit that criteria?
Yeah, that's a, that's going to be a toughie. That's a tough question. You know, I would, cause I mean, I don't really, I'm not privy to what their sales are, but I mean, I think just off top of my head, you would add up all the sports bars, all the restaurants, all the beauty salons, all the gyms. Whatever that number comes to, that would probably be the starting point. And then there's probably a bunch more I haven't really thought of. So you know, I would, I would imagine there's going to be quite a few applications.
And that's, you know, when I looked at it, you touched on it too, you know, about the maximum amount and you want to make it helpful. I remember seeing when, an article in the Tribune, when this started to roll out that I shared with you and Matt, but it was from Bloomington who was doing something and their maximum was seventy five hundred dollars. And I think that's a little low, you know, like you said. Is that meaningful or not? But, you know, just doing the math, if you do twenty thousand dollars for each applicant, that would touch thirty seven businesses. You know, if we dropped it down to fifteen thousand, then you could help fifty businesses, five zero. So I just maybe float that idea out there. And maybe there's a round two, you know, if we, if we had a lower amount, but then there's additional funds left over. Maybe we can offer a secondary or like I said, round two. But this would be a way to potentially serve more local businesses.
Yes, yep. And I, I, I am inclined to agree, Steve. I think that's a good point. The, the one thing that we're thinking of though, too, is that just based on the way we set up the scoring system, it's going to be a diversity of loans. So I mean, it'll range, you know, all the way from twenty on the top end to five on the lower end. So I'm hoping it's definitely going to go beyond thirty or forty. I hope we get up to fifty or sixty that we can help just based on how the points work out. But I think your points are all very good ones and we'll certainly look at that very carefully.
And then the other thing, you know, and I shared an email with Matt and Miles, you know, before the meeting with this, but for the council's standpoint. You know, if you look at, you know, who are really trying to benefit here is the ones who are really struggling or impacted, which again, having those extra points for the businesses that had to close, you know, is great. I appreciate that. But, you know, is there another piece of this that looks at not just the decline in the profit or percentage, but how much that, what percentage of that would translate to the eligible expenses in the program, you know, some it might be a lot more, you know, for them. And so that they could benefit a lot more directly, you know, with the loan versus others. You know, maybe it's not as big of a deal, you know, for their things. So.
Yep. Are you, are you just kind of referring to the, where the eligible expenditures are?
Yeah, comparing. I know those are set, so we can't do anything with that. But as, you know, the one criteria is percent decline in profits. Well then, could that be that percent decline or that dollar value, whatever? How does that relate to, you know, their actual expenses that are qualified? You know, their rent, their mortgage, their payroll, their, you know, all those other pieces.
Yep. And I'll have to, I'll have to give that some thought, to be honest. I, I gotta kind of think that through a little bit. We set up that point system so that they get the maximum points if they have the most decline in their profits. So I mean, if they, if their profits are down ninety percent, they're going to get fifty points. If their profits are down ten percent, then they just get a very few points. And then the award naturally then, or the, the, the loan amount would be affected then in proportion.
Well, maybe you could run some scenarios or again, it's just trying to you know, help people that really needed it. And so.
Yep, that's for sure. That's our goal.
And so, you know, the one criteria was the gross revenues. Was that for two thousand nineteen, then I'm assuming?
Yeah, the way, the way that we set it up is that we wanted to find out what their, what their gross revenues were on December, at the end of December twenty nineteen. And that's really just to find out if they qualify, period. Cause it needs to be before four, it needs to be below four million dollars gross revenue. So that tells us if they qualify for the program. And then we want to look at second quarter twenty nineteen compared to second quarter twenty twenty. Cause that tells us how their profits are affected then presumably by the pandemic itself. Because we're comparing a non-pandemic year with a pandemic year, we chart the difference. So one of the criteria for the applicants is that they need to have an actual loss. And they, they won't qualify unless they went backwards financially because of the pandemic. And they, they won't qualify unless they went backwards financially because of the pandemic.
Steve, you're on the.
And this uh. Doesn't uh double up on other assistance that they might have received?
Right, cause then um they have to certify that they did not get assistance from other sources. Cause that would exclude them, or at the very least, that if they did get the the payroll protection program. Uh and that, we can't double, we don't wanna double up on the expenses covered if it was covered by the other program. So they need to certify that for us. So we're trying to avoid any overlap.
Yeah, and that follows the requirement of the, of the CARES funding. You know, the, I think the difficult thing for everybody that's working through this, it was funny, I was in a conference call with the Reagan Minnesota cities and they more or less said, hey. We're kind of flying by the seat of our pants as well, trying to figure this, this out. And I think that's the challenge that a lot of us are. Um, you know, just, and and you know, I think the important thing to keep in mind too is that. This very well could change from week to week when it comes to eligible expenses. And so. You know, that's where we will have to try to leave a little bit of cushion, and that's really another conversation for the council too is, you know, are you comfortable with what we're? We're planning on setting aside for, for the funding, you know, that, that two hundred, the seven fifty. And then that one, one twenty-four because of, you know, if, if we're not, then we need to know that as well.
Um, that PPP money was just to cover expenses in a very specific window in the spring, so. The businesses would be able to apply for both, cause you wouldn't um. The application for this program would, the timeframe isn't the same, so.
Okay, so there's no overlap.
Right, so there shouldn't be any problem worrying about that.
Or there's some other programs too, so outside the PPE?
There were, but the PPP is a big one that everybody applied for. You know, there's some through the state as well. So I don't know that those state one has been, everybody's been notified about it yet. Um, I didn't apply for it, but I don't know that that's been awarded yet.
Yeah, I saw the, I, they rolled out the list of the, the ones that were able to get an award from that state program. And I did see, I think there's like five Hutchinson businesses that were on that list.
Yeah, and the other thing too.
That must have been pretty recently though, wasn't it?
Yeah, it just came out a couple of days ago.
Sure.
Couple of things to keep in mind too, obviously the county's got some CARES funding, you know, we've talked about the state potentially. Putting some funding out to some of the housing finance agencies. So those are all the things we have to keep track of too. And and keep in mind, we've got a very short window to, to try to, you know, take in these applications and process everything. Cause we have to be basically done with everything by November fifteenth, so.
So how's that gonna work with the county and, you know, to not overlap?
We've already had a, I've already had a conversation with the county, simply saying, oh, we're looking to implement our own program within the, the city of Hutchinson, so. But at this point, you know, they're not gonna take any applications um with, you know, that would be small business, that would be within the city of Hutchinson. Or we'd have to make sure that there's a communication with them that these businesses have received some funding, this is the, the amount of funding that they receive. So there's not a double up of that, of that funding. I'll be honest, that's part of what we're gonna have to figure out. Once we have a program established, that will be shared with the county, so they have a clear understanding. Because there could be, depending on what some eligible for from the city, that might only cover some of their expenses. Where then the potentially the county could come in and cover some, some additional ones, depending on where all that money gets, gets allocated. That's what's some of the difficult things we have to kind of work through and see how this plays out over the next couple of months.
And the other part would be if we would run out of funds and the county might be able to fill some of those gaps then too.
Potentially, yeah, depending on what, what they see for applications as, as they work through this.
All right, is there anything else for Miles?
Like I said, I, you know, we wanna make sure we're in the right direction from the council, and if, and if that's the case, you'll, I would say, look for some more formal. Actions at your next council meeting.
Yep, we'll be back um, back in two weeks with a formal proposal.
Yeah, I like the dollar breakdown, Matt, that you were asking about, you know, the. Seven fifty for the program and the other allocations. Just give some thought on the couple of those things that I mentioned, Miles.
We'll do that.
All right, uh moving on, uh we have a resolution number. This is under new business, uh resolution number one five one nine three. Resolution regarding the support of a job creation fund application in connection with three M.
Uh mayor and council, uh you know, it's one of those meetings, we have Mile here, Miles here, and so we're gonna take uh full advantage of him. And um I'm gonna hand it over to him, to him again to touch on this with you guys.
See, I, I like to get all my council business done for the year in one meeting, and I don't have to come back for fifty weeks. Okay.
You blew, you blew that one, Miles. You said you'd be back in two weeks. I heard ya.
Well, that's alright. Okay, just um real quick, um three M here in town, they're gonna be doing a little bit of an expansion. They're adding a new product line at the, at the facility, or at least that's what's being proposed. Um, next slide, Matt. There we go. Um, so yeah, they'll be manufacturing another something at the three M plant here in Hutchinson. So it's a pretty substantial investment. It's over fifty million dollars that they're gonna be putting into the Hutchinson facility. So ten and a half million would be renovations to the existing building, another two point nine million for site improvements. And then thirty-four million for new machinery and equipment. The project, it might potentially include a physical expansion of the plant. They might add ten thousand square feet. I think that's kind of unresolved right now. Uh they're still trying to decide if they can get this done within the existing footprint. So anyways, the project, it's gonna result in the creation of ten new jobs over the next three years. And then these are paying between twenty and twenty-nine dollars an hour plus benefits. Next slide. Um, and then to help with the project, three M, they're applying for economic development assistance from the state of Minnesota, their job creation fund. So the state is looking at providing a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just to help make the Hutchinson site competitive. With other sites in other states. So this is what the state decided that they, they think they can do. So as part of the job creation fund application, uh they always request a resolution of support from the local governing body. Um, as I mentioned, this is just purely a state program. There's no cost to us at all. Really, we're just being asked to provide this resolution of support. So I think uh there's a copy of that in your packet. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Miles? Always entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Five one nine three.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad. Roll call, Dave.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Hi.
Motion.
Gary or?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Miles, are you still available?
I'm right here.
Run out yet?
No, not yet. I'm aimed at the door.
I know. You know, when I thought of that, uh, you know, the small business loan thing, and you touched on it too, was, you know, well. There's probably fifty percent of the points could be aimed at the larger businesses, you know, with the higher payroll. Or the higher um profits and um. And so that's part of the concern too is, how do we? You know, benefit some of the truly smaller businesses. And I know that it's thirty FTEs. So that could be a lot of part timers that are in that, so um, and that's what. I was trying to get at, you know, with some of those suggestions too. So just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, and and I think that's valid, Steve. I, I think that's something that we've talked about and we'll keep on talking about it. Part of our thought process was that if it's a little bit bigger, then presumably their financial needs are gonna be a little bit greater. Thus, you know, we should probably throw a little bit more in their direction. But then we wanted to balance that. And so we thought, well, if we have a measurement for how badly a company is hit, and I can think of some very small companies. That are almost wiped out entirely, but they can, they can get a bundle of points off of that, that other metric. Where, you know, if their business is down ninety percent, they're automatically getting fifty points right there. Um, so then that'll hopefully catch them. So we're gonna, we're gonna do some modeling with this here to see if it generates the results that we want. And um we're gonna keep talking about it too, because I think all the points you brought up are, are good ones and they're certainly ones that. We've been talking about and will continue to talk about.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you very much.
Say, Miles, could you swing by and see me? I'm back by John Paulson's office before you take off, please.
Okay, I will do.
All right, all right, moving on, um. We have uh first reading of ordinance number twenty dash eight nineteen airport zoning update.
Dan, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. Good evening, uh mayor and council. Um, as you may recall, about two years ago, the airport went through a airport layout plan update. And that's where they looked at that grass crosswind runway as an option, and that was a kind of a preferred option out of that plan. So with that, uh MinDOT, uh the Department of Aviation at the state requires that we update our airport zoning. Uh to basically show that in the future, there may be a crosswind runway. So uh we updated our entire airport zoning ordinance. Um, process has been ongoing here for quite some time. We've been working through some um hiccups with the state on that. Uh however, we're in a position now where we've gotten the commissioner's order for approval of that uh airport zoning ordinance. And then in your packet, the text of that ordinance is in there, as well as the new uh zone A and B for that crosswind runway. Um, and with that, we're uh first reading, obviously, here this evening, uh we're recommending approval of that ordinance. Likewise, uh the county will be having this on their agenda for the county board meeting, I believe on August fourth, next Tuesday. To do a similar uh action, because some of the land is actually out in the township, not in the city limit. So we both have to uh update our ordinances regarding that. So with that, I'll just open it up to any questions you may have. Otherwise, we'll recommend approval.
So the other zone A and B that extend north and south, that hasn't been affected, it's really just the crosswind?
Yeah, that's the same as it's, it's been, it's been in place for many years. Uh that's the same. We did have to notify all those folks in that area regarding the public hearings and such, uh that it was an update. Uh there wasn't a lot of public comment though.
All right, any other questions for Dan?
And make a motion to approve it.
I beat you, Dave. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve ordinance number twenty dash eight nineteen. Roll call, Dave.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And it's Dan. All right, uh moving on, uh purchase of new fire tanker truck.
Well, mayor and council, I believe uh Chief Schuman is either gonna be joining us by phone or by his computer to kind of give. Well, there he is, to give everybody an update on what the, this project going to detail.
Alright, uh good evening, uh mayor and council. Um, in your packets is all of the uh specifics, uh the contract. Um, pricing information, et cetera, in regards to uh the replacement of um. Um, three thousand gallon tanker for the fire department. Um, Matt, are you able to pull up that?
I will share that right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the first page of that, this is just kind of a summary of the presentation we did for the rural townships. In our February sixth annual meeting. Um, and so the key points on that, I guess, is uh. You know, we, we had a budget number that we've been talking about with our rural partners on this project uh for the last two years now. And um so the committee that has been working on this truck, uh you know, they've, they've had focal points of, uh you know. Staying within their budget, um getting the needs met of, you know, what we're, we're at now and where we're gonna be at over the course of the next couple of decades. With this truck, uh any improvements, whether it's technology or equipment, uh to make, just to make sure we're getting what we need. And then to go out and kick the tires and look at other trucks that are out there, other departments, uh what works, what doesn't work, et cetera. Um, through that process, they have, um, they started from looking at options to refurbish. And exist the existing tanker, um what that looked like, met with a couple contractors that do that business, and that was not an option. Uh, for various reasons, um, looked for demo units, uh price points were not favorable in the demo units. And then, uh so we moved forward with the process of, of uh picking out a vendor and starting to work on specs. So go ahead and flip Matt to the next page, please. So this is just a quick uh recommended configuration that we're looking at. Um, it's gonna be an international chassis, three thousand gallon tank. Which is equal to what we have right now. Um, and this, this one would have the picture you see of it there in the spec drawing. It's got some cabinets on the driver's side, which is uh, which is improvement over what we've had in the past. Um, that's probably all we need if there, you know, if somebody has any specific questions on any of the specs of it. Um, but go ahead, Matt, and flip to the last page there. So again, that, the committee uh is headed up by Lieutenant Jeff McKay. They've been working on it for about two years, going over. Um, all the specs, all the details, et cetera, um, to make sure that we got the best valued piece of equipment that we could get. Uh and to fit our current needs and future needs. So at this time, um. Uh, we're requesting that the council approves the purchase and signing the contract. Uh so that we can start the build process for this truck, uh using the HGAC buy program. Uh this would be the same program that we used to purchase the last fire engine here a few years ago. Um, the proposed price uh turnkey is two hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And then just for clarification, um, this is a hundred per, this truck is a hundred percent owned by the rural. So the city would front the um costs, you know, there's, there's money due at signing of a contract. There's money due when the chassis is delivered, and then the final money due when the truck is complete. Uh the build time is approximately one year. So um, we would anticipate taking delivery in twenty twenty-one. The city would front those costs until delivery, and then after delivery, we bill the rural townships. Who have already been, uh, they've been on a three-year program saving for this. So they will have cash in hand uh once we invoice the truck uh after delivery. Um, I think that's uh, that's the bread and butter of it. Is there any questions or um thoughts you guys have on it?
Well, Mike, I did attend the meeting, the rural meeting, and I didn't tell you the committee you had put together. Did an excellent job on the research and uh they um. Looked at everything, so to meet your needs, I think this is a, be a real nice truck for the world.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Steve, second by Dave. Roll call, Dave.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Alright, thank you for this. All right, thank you for the support. We appreciate it.
Moving on, setting special meeting on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty to canvass the election results. And that meeting, that meeting would be at twelve noon, correct, Matt?
Yes. Yeah, it's being suggested. I mean, I guess that's up to the council. This would be three days after the primary election, which is obviously scheduled for April eleventh. It's a requirement for us to meet to canvass those election results. Obviously, we could do it simply, you could do it from your homes if you wanted to through our go-to meeting, or you could attend them like you do council meetings. But so we're just looking for you guys to schedule it. I think our recommendation at this time is do it at noon on that August fourteenth.
I'm scheduled to be out of town on vacation that day, so I don't know what my availability would be. Would we be able to just have a quorum if I can't make it?
Yeah, all we need is a quorum, so as long as there's three of you.
I'm good with that date and that time.
You want to make that a motion, Mary?
I will. I will make August fourteenth at noon.
You're right. And I'll second it. Motion by Mary, second by myself to set that meeting for August fourteenth at noon to canvass the election results. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Mary. Mary.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. All right, we have minutes from Hutchinson, City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Report for June two thousand twenty. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes from June sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Economic Development Authority Board Minutes from June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty. Matt, is Chief Girferson there? I thought I've seen him.
Yes, he is. He didn't run off yet, so.
Oh, does he have something to inform us about tonight?
He doesn't have anything to share unless you want to talk to him, so.
I had something for him.
Okay.
Just with the new law that the governor signed, you know, through the legislature as far as updating some of our policies, procedures. Is that something that the police commission will be reviewing? Anything else?
Yeah, we'll certainly be taking a look at that. The, as I alluded to at a previous council meeting, a lot of those mandates are already part of our policy, or we did make a few tweaks to one of our policies to comply with the current, current law. So, but there will be, there will be some model policies coming from post that we will have to implement. We just haven't seen those yet. So although the legislature passed the legislation, they haven't had a time to get the model policies out there to comply with those.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Yep, no problem. Anything else?
No, thank you, Chief Girferson.
I do want to say just one thing. The, the support from the community has been overwhelming over the last couple of weeks. And I just want to publicly thank the community for that. And then also, again, thank you guys for your continued support as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Is there anybody else out there? Miles, does he have anything else for us?
No. Miles said he spoke enough tonight, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, you've got Kent's here, Mark's here, and I see Chief Schuman still on the, on the meeting call if you need to talk to any of them.
Chief Schuman, do you have anything else for us tonight? I don't think so, huh?
I spoke enough, thank you.
All right, thanks, chief. Kent, what do you have for us tonight?
Kent City doesn't have anything for the council tonight, unless you guys have anything for him.
Oh, my gosh. How about Mr. Sabora?
Surprisingly, he doesn't have anything to share either, so.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, keepers. Dave, do you have anything for us?
No, I really don't, thank you.
All right, Mary.
The only thing I have is I just wanted to give a shout out to Hutch Utilities. We had a power outage in our neighborhood, and they were Johnny on the spot. Those guys were there, and as soon as they went there to fix it, we had a downpour, and they're fixing our electrical for everyone in the neighborhood in the rain. So thanks to Hutch Utilities, we got the greatest power around, I'll tell you that. So other than that, stay safe, everybody.
Thanks, Mary. Chad, do you have something for us?
I didn't have anything extra.
All right, thanks, Chad. Steve.
I have a couple of things. One for Kent, just wondering with the utility work on Main Street, you know, how is what's being removed looked, you know, quality wise? And I only ask because, you know, you look forward maybe fifty years down the road. You know, the road will have to be replaced again, and what we're putting in now, would that conceivably be better quality and last longer? So maybe, you know, that piping doesn't have to be replaced. Maybe that can go a hundred years, you know? And this would be kind of a guide, you know, what we're pulling out. What are you seeing?
Right, yeah, it boils down to pipe types, pipe materials in the past, you know, obviously.
Sure.
The sewer pipe out there is clay sewer pipe. You know, that's the evolution of sewer pipes, you know, or tiles for that matter. You know, it came just from some mortar piping, you know, there were cement type pipes, and then a lot of clay was put in the ground on the sewer side of things. And, yeah, no, it's aged, it's moved over time. I think the biggest thing really to cut to the chase of your question, Steve, is PVC pipe, you know, plastic pipe. That's what we're now using for sanitary sewer and water main. And that's, that's really the advancement that's been made over the last, you know, couple of decades or so. You know, even as far as fifteen years ago, the city was still putting in ductile iron pipe for water main. And we made that evolution, you know, probably about, well, shortly going into the Highway seven project shortly before that. So, yeah, it's PVC for sewer, PVC for water. Plastic, obviously, lasts a long time. And, yeah, no, if the roads redone in fifty years, that plastic pipe will be just fine. We do have some metal pipe on both fronts, up on the north of the two blocks due to the anticipated contaminated soils that we talked about for the environmental work on the front end of the project. So, yeah, two out of the seven blocks do have ductile iron pipe on both the water and sewer side of things. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yep, that helps. Again, the metal was just because it wouldn't react to the contaminated soil versus a plastic.
To the anticipated petroleum-based contamination.
Okay, yeah. And then I just wanted to mention the South Central Pond. I think the plantings really turned out nice, and the tall, tall plantings have helped take care of the geese, you know, that we saw last fall, so we talked about. So that was nice to see, but now the benches have been added, some memorial benches. So it's really turned out nice, so just wanted to comment on that.
No, yeah, it looks good down there. It's really filled out this year, so we'll get it. We've been talking with the Parks Department with respect to the routine maintenance plan that'll be administered as the years go by. So, you know, obviously, with those prairie wetland type plantings, there will have to be some mowings and some periodic mowings and burnings over time. No, it's looking good right now.
On that note, the T-ball field's also turned out very nice. I've had the opportunity to take in some T-ball this summer, and Ben's been parking them in the Hidden Dingers into the pond. So he's just really enjoying that. It's kind of like San Francisco and the ballpark there, so.
Get somebody out in a kayak out there. You know anybody who's got a kayak?
Anything else for Kent?
All right, thank you.
But, you know, Chad, you can make Benny write it down so he can check the pipes in fifty years, because he's probably the only one that's going to be around.
I'll note that tonight when I get home.
All right. That's, go ahead, Steve.
Couple other things. One, you know, with Creekside, we talked about doing the analysis with the source separated, so just curious if.
I actually just signed a contract today, so.
Perfect.
Just hired somebody, and I think they expected the last, next three to four months, that evaluation will take place.
Good. Just saw, you know, as we've mentioned previously with the CIP, there's in the audit, there's some significant dollars there, depending what we're going to use. Those can be utilized other ways. The last thing was, you know, I've heard that Skyview Dairy might be looking at expanding. Just wondering if there's any reviews in the works that, since proximity to the city with that.
Unfortunately, Dan jumped off, and so I know there was, I think, a meeting last week. I guess I can follow up with him and maybe have him communicate with the council what the results were of that meeting. I thought that, I thought there was one that took place last week, or at least there's one this week, if not last week. So I'll make a note to Dan and follow up with you guys on that.
All right, thanks. That's it. Thanks, Gary.
All right, Steve. Matt, you're up.
Just a couple of reminders. First off, August eleventh is a primary election, so keep that in mind. That's scheduled for our next council meeting. So with that in place, just another reminder that our next meeting will start at four P M on August eleventh. So make sure to keep that in mind, and it will have to be done by six o'clock that evening. And then lastly, as we've talked about, and we've started ramping up, pursuing the next phase of the police station. I'm starting to look at design. And as we've kind of shared before, it's our desire to kind of bring on a construction manager for this project. And we've got an interview scheduled with about a half dozen firms. I'm better scheduled for August sixth and seventh, so if there's a council member or two who'd like to participate in that, just reach out to me, and I'll get you the details on when that's going to take place. Otherwise, that's it.
Just curious about the CIP. We mentioned the bid openings, so is that going to come at the next council meeting or?
Yep, that's, the plan is to be awarded at the next council meeting.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right, Steve, Chad, maybe you guys, you can help me out on this. I had somebody ask me about bike etiquette on the, on the trail. So if you're coming up behind somebody that's walking, what is the etiquette for bike traffic?
The cyclists usually will have like a little bell or say on your left or something, typically what people do.
And that, as far as etiquette, you really should slow down. And as Chad mentioned, just give notice that you're coming up. And it's just common courtesy. I know the leader did something on that earlier this spring, but obviously it, so I, good reminder.
All righty, thank you for that. That's, that's all I have, so adjournments in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to adjourn. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi.